I can't get that.
Well.
I can't.
Mine wouldn't, mine wouldn't. Mine won't. My, no. I guess we didn't.
You gotta, sometimes you gotta climb underneath them.
Oh, that's why, Chris, no, I didn't climb anywhere.
You can push the button on top. There you go, there's one. Usually she hasn't started out hard, but try it.
But Sharice can't get that when they're going to do her pre-k.
Did you know that we were there? Did she only tell you?
I heard that.
We were having President Vice President having a cup of coffee this morning and then he said, "Walk in," and I'm like, "If anybody else comes, we'll have a quorum somewhere."
No, I totally missed that whole thing. I'm not very impressed.
Good evening, and welcome to the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Education Regular Board Meeting. Welcome this evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Jessie and I will read our mission statement.
Waterloo Schools Community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every student graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship. That's evidenced by continued education, preserving career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks Jessie. I kinda put him on the spot just two seconds ago and said, "Hey, you read that." So. The first item on our agenda this evening is Item A. This is on page one. And this is the expansion of our kindergarten creative curriculum pilot. And I know that Dr. Suddit is here this evening, and I think Comfort's here too. And so I would ask that the two of you come forward, and I'm not sure who all, Ms. Sanford, I've got some people out there from Orange. Ms. Hart, I don't know who's coming up to talk, but you're all gonna come up and talk. Excellent. Well, the microphone is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're just happy to be before you on today.
Is your green button on?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Now I can, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
I wanna make sure everybody else can hear you.
Oh, thank you, thank you. We're just happy to be before you on today. Just happy to have the opportunity to impact our youngest learners, our kindergarten students, as you know, and our preschools. We do the preschool creative curriculum. And so we got opportunity, I spoke with Dr. Lindeman, got an opportunity to participate last year in the kindergarten pilot of the creative curriculum for kindergarten. And we've seen some fabulous results, and we're just seeking to expand the pilot and continue the work. So behind me is gonna be Sunny, she's the principal of Orange. And these two dynamic, fabulous, developmentally appropriate kindergarten teachers are going to speak to you about the outcomes of that pilot.
Good evening, you guys. Thank you again from me too personally for letting us come before you and just speak a little bit about our story this past year. So Sharletta came to us last summer and just said, "Hey, I got an idea." And sold it to the three of us, and before she probably even got five minutes into the spiel, we said, "We'll do it." So, a little bit of history, Janelle and I, I actually started my, my career here at, in Waterloo Schools with Janelle over at McKinstry, and she was a kindergarten teacher. And I was aspiring to be in the field of early childhood, and we just have bumped into each other across our career. And so when we were back together again at Orange, and this came across our plate, we were like, hands down, we're doing it. We're gonna figure it out, and we're gonna make the results happen, cuz it's so powerful. And so I don't wanna talk too much, because these ladies are the ones that made it happen. The only thing I am gonna just say is a little bit about the data. Do you guys have this sheet in front of you? Okay, so the, so really what we said is hit the standards. You hit the standards at the end of the year, you're golden. Take the pilot, own it, figure it out, make it yours, and hit the standards at the end of the year. That's all we need you to do. So when you look across this, this is our spring FAST results. And the two teachers that are the Orange Teacher One and Teacher Three, that's these two ladies right here. And their FAST composite scores, if you just look over all of them and the subtests, you'll see that the things that happened in their classroom are a little bit higher than the others. I will tell you, just so you know the story, Teacher Two is a brand-new, first-year-out-of-the-gate teacher. So when you have that, you naturally expect there to be a little bit less than some, these two ladies who've been in the game for quite some more time. And Teacher Four has been in the game, and actually this year is her last year of the game. And so she still has pretty high scores, but she's still not as high as our two that did creative curriculum. So this is the, the number piece when it comes to the standards. I think the story that speaks louder though is the testimonials that you'll hear from the teachers. The testimonials you'll hear from families and parents that had children in these two ladies' classes, which is on this as well. That speaks more volumes into us impacting the emotional, the emotional side of children and their problem-solving skills and their creativity and their working together and thinking outside the box versus just skill and drill, skill and drill, skill and drill. So I'm gonna let these two ladies just speak for a moment, and then if you have any questions, we are happy to answer them.
Okay, oh yeah, we can talk together. Way to go, Holly. Okay. All right, well, I'm Janelle Kimston. I've been with the Waterloo District probably as long as Moses has been alive. And it's been a privilege, an absolute privilege. So I've seen the pendulum move from one side completely to the other. It's my happy place now that we are back swinging it this way, where children can talk through play. Play is more than just play. Play is learning for the early childhood child. One of the most exciting things that I think I saw through this pilot was, I don't know about you, but when I was five, I could not give a definition of what a gable or a buttress was. Our students could. They, they knew how to solve problems. They were excited about learning. They were excited about weaving their writing into the six units that we were working on. When I, when we were coming close to the end of the pilot, at the end of the year, I thought it was really important to show everybody what was happening in our two classrooms. So having the big mouth that I do, I said to Sunny, "Hey, can we have a district showcase for this?" I think I sent Holly over the edge when I said that. But we did, we opened our classrooms up. And the two things that were said by almost everybody that walked into our classrooms were, authentic learning, raise the rigor. It raised the rigor. And that made me so happy, because I knew we had done what we set out to do. And that was to make the learning authentic, not to steer away from the core, and to raise that rigor and make them good, genuine thinkers. And a bonus was that they learned to talk to each other, they learned to solve their own problems. And I am way excited to expand this, this next year. So thank you so much for the opportunity. It's made, it's made me love what I'm doing even more.
Hi, I'm Holly Karolus. I've been with the Waterloo District for about six years now, a total of eighteen years of teaching. I'm just gonna back up what Janelle said, saw so many great things from this, not just from the academic aspect, but also the social, emotional. One thing that I wanna attest to is, I had a little boy this year who had a very difficult background. Had a hard time getting along with students, had a hard time following directions. But when he had that hour of play for creative curriculum, he got along with students. He was so engaged in his learning, I didn't have issues with his behavior at all. Also, when we tied in with the academic study of the units of study for creative curriculum, he was actively engaged in that as well. Whereas if you were to just sit him down at the regular table or desk, he would be off task in that. So it really engages students. I've heard from numerous parents, when we did our grocery store unit, all the things that they could learn about a grocery store, parents would come back and say, "Oh my goodness, I can't, I never learned any of this stuff before." We also, at the end of our units of study, we presented to different groups of people. We did classes within our school. I had third graders who were like, "Wow, I never knew all this stuff about a grocery store." Because at the end of each of these units, the students showcased what they have learned to different types of people. And they showcased their learning, and it's just wonderful what they could do. Even at the end, when we had other principals come in, they were just astounded too, even with the vocabulary that they learned and how the kids could explain what they had learned through this program. So I'm also very excited to implement this again and to get other kindergarten teachers on board with this across the district as well. So thank you very much.
I'm just gonna pop in there one more time and just say, I just wanna thank you guys for you guys and Darren and Sharletta for just the trust. Because when you give people, these two ladies like this, just the trust that, hey, I believe that you can do it, here's what you have to hit by the end of the year, here's the resources that you have, now go. The things that happened when you did that are so authentic, the connections that they have across the curriculum, like the collaboration that they had with our specialist teachers to pull them in into the different units, the collaboration they had with our community to, to get speakers to come in or to go to them that connects to the units that they were learning, that connects to the standards that was a part of the unit. It's just rich. And when things are rich like that, and you get to let these people who are the experts in the classroom just go, it, like, that, this happens then. The data, the data goes with it. So just thank you, and thank you, and thank you for letting us continue to expand out. And we're hoping that it will just keep growing for Waterloo. Thank you.
You're welcome. The narrative, the background narrative says that this, in hopes that the level of student burnout will lessen. What does student burnout look like in kindergarten?
Well, student, the student, yes, the student burnout that we're thinking about is the longevity. So like, if I start in kindergarten and I'm not allowed to do some of the early childhood age-appropriate things, like the guided play, where I'm learning through play how to connect with people, how to talk to people, how to problem-solve with people, if I'm not learning that in kindergarten, and then I go to first grade, and then I go to second grade, and I don't have some of those skills to build off of, then by the time I'm getting to second grade, I might be burnt out. My behaviors are just gonna start to go here, even at the kindergarten level from first semester to second semester. I'm done doing the sitting for forty minutes and writing, because I need to be tricked as a six-year-old that I really am learning the whole time, but I'm gonna kinda like navigate that learning through the play and through the different things I'm doing. I'm still hitting the standards, and I'm still getting the results that I need as the educator in the classroom. But I'm not, I'm not sitting the whole time, because I'm six years old and I can, I only have so much bottom power. I mean, even us, if we sit too long, our minds start to go this way. So that's the burnout that we were thinking about. Sharletta, is that, does that sound good?
Right, you gave a great definition, I was gonna say, and it portrays itself in referrals and behaviors, the behaviors that we don't really want.
So when the density focus approach was implemented, did any of you have reservations at that time? Or speak against it at that time?
Yes, when I found out about it, I did kinda have reservations, and I did kinda, I've been vocal about it. And Dr. Lindeman kinda knows I've been vocal, and, you know, went to her, and she was like, "Well, Sharletta, I would agree that I think we have went too far over to this side." So she was so encouraging of this pilot, so that we could get back to a more balanced, developmentally appropriate approach.
So, so just what was wrong in the process that we selected that program?
I would say, okay, back me up on this.
Okay.
Okay, I would say, I remember, I, I can remember, and Janelle and I have talked about this, cuz I was in the kindergarten classroom when it happened, when we, we decided, without maybe all of the information, we decided as a district to take out some of the play, the play types up, the centers, which I would say, if, if you don't fully understand how to implement guided play in your classroom, then you're gonna have classrooms that are not doing it correctly and are not using it in a way that you can still hit results and you're playing at the same time. So information, awareness, not knowing how to implement the way that it should be implemented, then you might, you might walk in and you just have kids playing in the kitchen, but they're not connecting it to a standard. With this curriculum, it does like lockstep you through the standards and where they connect with the math concepts, where they connect with the writing, where they connect with the reading, and then, and it intertwines it all within like an architectural unit. And so the vocabulary that the kids are using during all of this intertwining is going up. And the kids don't realize that by building that castle, or the school, or the, whatever they're building.
I think it sounds, it sounds like, you know, you're on the right track now. I'm just trying to explore, you know, every recommendation that comes before us is wonderful. And sometimes, you know, there needs to be some voices, there needs to be enough balance in the system that if someone has reservations, you know, then we quickly, this has been 2013, so it's, it's five, six years.
Can I add? Are, were you, did you have another question? I can wait.
I have one more question.
Okay.
So this is gonna be on eight of how many classrooms?
Comfort, do you know offhand how many kindergarten classrooms we have in the district?
Forty.
Forty, thank you, Dr. Lindeman.
Forty.
So what prevent, why, why only eight?
Well, because we thought that that would be, you know, we wanna expand it. And look, Lyle, I'll just get straight to the point. I'd love to bring on all forty. I think the data's there to support all forty, but we just wanna make sure, you know, that we're, we're implementing with fidelity. This has been a personal goal of mine for a long time, to create the foundation upon which we're trying to build our house. So we won't have to worry about the third grade test scores. I mean, if we start out strong, we can end up strong. So, you know, we, we went with eight. We're, we're trying to bring on Becker. We're trying to also, well, we're going to bring on Becker, we're going to bring on Pointer. We have the buy-in from those principals. They've talked to their kindergarten teachers, they're ready to go. And so we do have, I mean, Kitterell would like to come on board as well. We're also talking about some financial commitment too. So those are the things that we're working with.
So if this is as successful as you expect, then what resources will be required to make this available for every student?
Well, we would need the resources to purchase the curriculum and the accompanying professional development that goes with it. And then also, as you know, you know, we wanna bring back the centers. So we might, you know, we do have some things in storage from when we took them out of kindergarten, but quite frankly, that's been about six years ago, so we'll need, you know, maybe some resources there. At this point, I don't know, I'll just say, many of you know I'm kinda frugal with the pre-K budget, because we've been able to expand and grow the voluntary preschool program that I'm responsible for. We've been able to have some carryover. I'm so grateful to Michael and his staff, they've been able to help me with that. And so that's how we're trying to, you know, get down what we need to do at kindergarten level as well.
Well, let me just say, I'm super excited, and I'll tell you why. You know, this, this program, I think self-directed play, when it's directly connected to curriculum, is awesome. And I'll tell you why, you know, a lot of people talk about Montessori schools and how great they are. And so this is fundamentally kinda like the Montessori schools. The difference between Montessori schools and public schools is public schools don't have the money to invest in the resources. So if we as a board can get these educators what they need, and I would be so excited to see this curriculum implemented on the northeast side, because it's almost like putting peanut butter on broccoli. You're tricking kids into helping themselves. And when they get tactile play at that young age, they're being introduced to concepts that they may not even know about. Because if you get in traditional early child, I'm not trying to get in your lane. This, this is just as a layperson that's talking. So I, I hope that as a board, we do provide you all with, with whatever you need so that we can expand this program into some of the other schools, especially those that have some of our Title I schools. Yes, 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 we need to do that.
I would say, just speaking to that and to you, Lyle, that when, when the three of us met and we're just like talking about the expansion, we had started with just Pointer. But if we wanna just be, like, just real, like, there's a perception about Pointer and about Orange. And in order to really allow you guys to see a full, like, how does it really work across the continuum of what we have here in Waterloo, we need to pull in another school that has some different population that what Pointer and Orange has. So another, so, so Becker came up, Cunningham did come up. Cunningham, though, when we think about all of the stuff that they just received just this past year at the kindergarten level curriculum-wise, it's hard, we wouldn't want to say, okay, everything that you got last year here, let's give you this here, and I want you to figure out how to juggle it.
We wanna make sure that the pilot works, so that we can see where the gaps are, and so that we can strategically pinpoint what Cunningham would need as opposed to Pointer or the other others. Also, you know, we have some educators who, how they were trained is sit and get. And we know when we're dealing with, with, with early childhood, that's not gonna always work these days. So I'm hoping that we'll get our educators some training, some additional training to teach them these methods.
That's all I have to say.
So I just wanted to add to what you said. One of the things that is critically important about this, and I was really excited about it, is research tells us that we need to ensure that our kids are engaged in learning and that they engage in, and I say this all the time, adult productive struggle. One of the things that this allows us students to do is to be able to engage in that. Then they have the guided part to it. And this is going to translate into them engaging in, you know, we talk about discourse at every level in every content area. So this really is going to have a lot of positive impact. And like, you know, Sunny was saying, we're trying to be strategic. And yeah, Cunningham was a good one, but they're actually piloting a reading materials right now. In fact, they have PD all of this week. So we wanna be successful. We don't want to overload them. And so the PD part of it, again, being very strategic and making sure that we set people up to succeed is one of the reasons that we did not expand throughout the district, because of course it would take a process for us to be able to do that.
And I just wanted to thank all of you for all your work, and I just think it's awesome. And I guess when I was looking at this, from a layperson's term, could you tell us what some nonsense words are?
Sure. Nonsense, sure. Nonsense words teach the kids how to be able to look at a word that's not a real word, but it is a consonant-vowel consonant word, and be able to have those skills to separate it and read it. Okay? So for instance, the word might be hob, H-O-B. So they would go, "H, A, B, hob." So, and it is, it is a section from the FAST, from the FAST test.
Super, cuz I saw Teacher One had a hundred percent on that, so we're good with nonsense words.
Yes. It's about phonics, right.
Yeah, phonics is awesome. So thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate that.
I have one more question. Is there a strategic plan to roll this out to all students, or?
After this coming year to eight to?
Yeah, again, we talked about being strategic. So this year, we're going to continue to collect data, because we've added more schools, because you can't make a decision based on one school. So we're going to collect data to see the impact that that's having on our students, and then there will be a recommendation for this to be expanded.
I guess I encourage you not to be shy about the resources required. They may not be available, but if you don't ask. Cuz I think this fits perfectly, you know, creativity supports entrepreneurship. And if you look at our, our careers, we're teaching at the Career Center, every one of them has an opportunity for entrepreneurship, some more than others, but that's kinda the name of the game in the future, so I think this is a very critical building block.
Absolutely, that's why early childhood is critically important to the success of our kids as they go through their schooling. So those are things that we took into consideration. Thank you.
And I have one more question, as far as are you gonna track these pre-K, like, through kindergarten, through first, second, third, to see how then they do perform with this added education?
We did talk, we did talk about that, cuz we're really curious. Especially because if you read on some of the testimonies, we really, we asked like our specialist teachers who see all the kids, like, what did you notice that was different between class, these two classes and these two classes? And they all noticed something. And so we're, we, we, yes, the answer to your question is yes.
And I just have one more. For our students who have special needs, could you just briefly explain why this curriculum is, is even more beneficial for them, if, if that's okay?
Just because we, you know, had some time on this, because the curriculum itself meets the students at, right where they are. Right at the point of entry. It just meets them where they are. And then also, you know, we've been doing this, I've been doing this for probably thirteen, fourteen years. And it's inclusive, it allows those to even more participate in the least restrictive environment, because they didn't say, but during the guided play or the center time, there's always someone, a teacher, parent assisting and helping those children by asking them, scaffolding questions to get that inquiry, and, you know, to just take that child to the next level where they are individually.
And it also allows you to see those students who are a little bit advanced.
Yes. Yes, open ended.
One, one last comment. As we transition, I think this came up, Lyle, when you were talking. I think it's a really good statement. I think in education as a whole, maybe, I mean, not, certainly not just in Waterloo, I think in our, our nation and probably internationally. I think that we constantly are in this flux of, from between the, the pendulum swing between art and science. You know, my mom was a teacher way back in the sixties, and she said, "You know what? I just went in my room and did my thing, and nobody ever asked me what I taught. I just, I just taught what I thought they needed to know." That truly was art, right? So then we went to our, you know, our kids aren't learning consistently. It might make a difference, you know, their, their zip code or the teacher that they have makes a huge difference. So then we, we did this pendulum, we probably would, I would use the word nationally and internationally. I think in education, we maybe overcorrected, and we went to the, the art. Now, everybody gets exactly the same thing on the same day, whatever, and we lost some of that, the, the, you know, the art of that. And so I think finding, when we talk about the pendulum swing and the balance, I think it's best said that we're really looking at the right, you know, the right balance between the art and science. I don't think we will ever go back, if you say, here's the art and here's the science and the pendulum, if this is halfway, I don't think we'll ever go back into the half of the art where it's, it's more art than it is science, because we know so much more. But I think the pendulum is definitely swinging back to be a better balance. So if that makes sense, I think that's, you know, when we know more, when we, you know, when we know better, we do better. Thank you.
And, and the intersection between arts and sciences builds bridges.
And, and the intersection between arts and sciences builds bridges.
All right.
No, like, really, you can build, learn how to build a bridge. Science and...
Thank you all so much.
Thank you all for being here tonight and for taking all of our questions. We really appreciate it. So, all right, the next item on our agenda then is Item B. And this is our International Baccalaureate and Advanced Programming update. And Ms. Sharice is here tonight, Sharice Orpman is here tonight to give us a little update. And I know you had a video that you're going to send to us.
That video was spectacular. I'll send it to you.
Okay.
I'm having some little glitch over here, but you'll get it. It's about six minutes long, and we want to update. We're a different IB program than we were five years ago, and now it's the students telling the story. I don't need to be the one telling the story all the time. They tell it for us. So, also, new and improved readers, board members, yes. That's new. Okay, so what I, I want to do today is, Sharice Orpman, Advanced Programs and International Baccalaureate Coordinator for Waterloo, I believe to be one of the best jobs on the planet, and incredibly proud. You might not even know the pride that's out there. So, today, I hope to dispel just a few myths, debunk some things on, I know there's been some wonderings about equity in advanced programs. Also, wondering about what does IB AP look like? And then, some of you might not know some of the updates we've done to Concurrent, to really take back ownership of those courses and build capacity in our own teachers. So, it will just be an appetizer. Yes, Lyle, I believe in action plans. So, everything tied to this little soundbite today has an action plan. If you'd like to have the four-course meal in any of these areas that I'm just giving you an update on, please say, "Sharice, let's sit down and talk about it." I have a lot of meetings on all of these different facets of advanced opportunities in Waterloo. So, at any given time, I'll just go ahead and add school board members, and you can come visit if you want to. And if not, I'll go ahead and provide reports. Again, I love to have the actual, I think sometimes we look at quantitative and qualitative, and a board needs to look at quantitative. But the qualitative is so deep and profound, and conversations are happening now, because I'm anecdotal, at our state schools and even outside of the state of Iowa, that we've got students graduating from Waterloo schools, and their classmates are saying, "Where did you learn this? What high school did you go to? How are you this prepared?" And that's huge and incredibly proud. So, thank you, Board. Thank you, Jane. You have three artifacts that I gave you, so I'll just go through those real quick and ask questions along the way. I love different ideas about this, so please help me think through it with you. The first one, point of pride. You should have this one, Equity in Advanced Programs. So, this is more than, although I also work directly with the ELP, or you may remember it as Talented and Gifted back in the 80s or 90s. It's an expanded learning program. I'm really concentrate on some of our high school advanced programs. So, sort of like the soup to nuts that we just saw in creative curriculum with preschool and kindergarten, that lends itself up to the same thinking habits required at the high school. So, I concentrated it into, just so you know, the language Concurrent is the term for all the Hawkeye classes. And that's the Equity in Advanced Programs document. That also, just so you're aware of this, and you might not know, I've got to take those off when I'm not reading. So, it splits into two veins. You've got Jeff Frost here with Waterloo Career Center, which is much more based on, it could be college, but it's really tight in career pathway. As you know, probably, you've been out to the facility, Elk Run, and the Career Center. Those are concurrent courses, not all. But most of those are concurrent, so they're tied to those Hawkeye credits. What I work and push really hard is the liberal arts path of concurrent options. So, this year, I worked really hard on having it not be outsourced, but to build our teachers to teach those concurrent courses at East and West. It reduces, it opens up access. It reduces the travel for kids who maybe feel uncomfortable, but want to try taking a college class in high school, and they don't want to travel out to Hawkeye, or maybe they think it's not for me. So, it's a big point of pride for open access. We just want you to be prepared. So, again, those are concurrent, the classes that are the Hawkeye out at the Career Center and Elk Run. And also, the concurrent ones that I work directly with are the liberal arts, such as Western Civ, Composition 1 and 2, Fundamentals of Oral Communication, the liberal arts more than the, which would be more tied to the college path. So, that's concurrent. And as you can see, I pulled out the 11th and 12th grade subgroups. If you're wondering about that, greater than less than, that's more than one race, multi-cultural, multi-ethnic. You can see how it matches up. So, what you want, as you can see there, you want to look at those subgroups, and you want to see those numbers consistent within those advanced pathways. Advanced Placement are the AP courses. International Baccalaureate Full Diploma Program, that's if kids are taking a full load of IB and the core outcomes and writing their own essay. Last year, we opened it up to IB Singleton. So, if a student wants to take a college-level course, that helped with, you know, building the numbers, growing the program, and not being an all or nothing. Plus, what we found is they were comparable to courses that were being offered outside of Waterloo, and we wanted to take that back and own it. U&amp;I would be called PSEO or Post-Secondary Education Option. You can see, we have a pretty small number of kids who actually go to U&amp;I for courses when they're in high school. But I'd like you to just take a quick little look at that with the subgroups. And again, I isolated it to an 11th and 12th, because that's typically the dominant population. But we have a lot of sophomores and a few freshmen who are starting to take courses within those four programs. I'm super proud. Some things we need to build on.
So, are those, are these unduplicated students, 1,300 and 8?
Just juniors and seniors.
Correct, juniors and seniors who are in, yes, yes.
From all schools.
Through all schools. Mm-hmm.
But you can't be in more than one category. They're unduplicated.
Correct.
Correct.
Because that's a federal coding for race, so it's, it's parent-selected.
Okay.
And that's a Tableau report. Good question, Lyle. Okay, questions on that?
Yes, I have a question. The, the, the programs that are credit by exam, those, the AP, and is it the IB?
Yes.
So, in terms of cost for the district, which ones are more conducive cost-wise for the district?
So, you wanted an appetizer, not a four-course meal? Okay, well, here's what we did. Here's what we did.
The end result is that they're getting college credit.
Correct. So, last, last year, here's what we did different. And Michael knows this, because I've been looking for change in my sofa for about two years now, to support what everybody was doing, but we didn't know what was happening. So, I'm going to give you a really quick, I'm going to give you the skinny on Concurrent through Hawkeye. Hawkeye went a couple of years back, no more PSEO, they would all be concurrent. Good news, through our concurrent courses through Hawkeye, we're able to get supplemental weighting. It's .46 return for liberal arts, .70 CTE, right, Jeff? .70 CTE return. That's a good return. However, if it's taught by a Hawkeye staff, we pay 100% of the cost. A three-credit hour course would be about $540. This is for public and for non-public, part of senior year-plus guidelines. We are the beacon for those other non-public schools who don't have the opportunities for students. So, what we found out is, if our staff teach them, we only pay 20% the cost of that course. So, we still give them the robust cost of the course. We're better at having the intimacy with the students, who maybe if they went out to Hawkeye or to the Metro Campus, kind of, you know, this is a little hard, I don't want to talk to anybody about it, and didn't realize that the return is, you just put either a failure, failed to withdraw, or a W past the drop date on your transcript, and it impacts your financial aid. It is now in a college transcript. So, in twofold, we took that back. And now, I don't have the numbers here, but I do have them in my office, and I'll send that to you. So, now, we're paying 20% the cost, we have local control, we can support our students, counselors and I can go into the room, remind them of drop dates, talk to them about getting tutors. It's just more intimate, and it's, it's locally owned. With that, we pay for the books. So, that's on top of the 20%. Next year, we don't, we hope that it's really going to cut back on what we paid out the year before. It will. There's no way around it. It will cut back on what we paid out. And we pay for the textbooks, because Jane and all of you, if you didn't know, have committed to open access, and we don't want not being able to pay for books to be a barrier. So, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but when you add the books on top of it, it's actually less than AP and probably consistent with IB. So, that's a great question. And I will show you the IB and AP reports. One thing that IB has in the Full Diploma, it is aligned ACT. That subgroup has the highest ACT average in the district, because it's all aligned, and you have the, the full liberal arts and the writing. And when Lyle talked about critical thinking, it's not just about a laundry list of why I believe this to be true, it's claims and counterclaims. We have to have kids who can think critically, defending an argument, synthesizing and creating, which all these do tie to that. That's a great question.
So, when you compare it cost, did you consider who's paying for the staff?
It's our, there are already our teachers who already teach classes in the Waterloo schools. So, for example, let me give you an example.
But if it's a Hawkeye instructor, they pay the instructor then, right?
We, yes, that's part of our $100 to cover the cost of the class. That's why we're paying 540 for a three-credit hour.
So, we will use our instructors anytime we can, our, our teachers to use, to teach these courses. They have to be certified to be able to teach those, but we will use our teachers, because we would be using them anyway. They would be teaching our kids regardless. So, we're always going to use them.
But now, let me give you an example, because one of the charges of the Board, and this is something that I believe in, is having as many opportunities for kids to be prepared for whatever college career pathway. But if I can recover for you, and you can take Western Civ 1 and 2, and you can have that transfer to Iowa, Iowa State, U&amp;I, and it puts you one step further into a path of opportunity of higher ed, I would want to build up that, my, our staff, our teachers, to teach that and give them those six to eight college credits, then maybe build up another course that doesn't have that same impact. Just so you know, I don't know if you know this, I did send this out earlier. 33.3% of juniors and seniors are taking one or more college classes in Waterloo. That is incredible. Now, if you look at the whole totality of numbers, it's 19.1. But right now, come on, hey now! Good! Super happy. So, here's what we have. We have a menu of what you want to take for advanced programs. And we are working really hard with counselors and with the teachers too, and now district administrators, talk. We all need to talk and say, early on in middle school, this is an opportunity for all students. I oversee advanced programs because it's law, gifted at law, that if a student comes in and only needs one to three introductions, I don't want her or him to sit idle. That's not, their right is to be extended. Okay, so that's the equity piece of it. Now, I wanted to show you the AP real quick.
Hold on just a second.
Sharice, I just thought it would, it was very, Jessie and I were talking as far as our Hispanic population. 21% go through the, receive the IB Diploma Program. That is pretty awesome with just 10% of the population overall.
So, this is a trend at East High in particular, Hispanic females. And they are first generation. Many of the moms and dads do not speak English in the home, and they are doing graduate-level work and being over-prepared for whatever path they want and not giving up. It is a huge point of pride, and that's why I want to share that video with you. I had one of the students whose mom came over here when she was very young, and was relentless in supporting her in any way she could. She wrote her research about the culture of what that must have been and the sacrifice that must have been. And she partnered it with Bilingual Books. And she read it to her mom, and her mom cried, and she said, "I don't understand all of it, but I'm so proud." So, it's about being not just bilingual. We're creating biliterate, open-minded, well-rounded, deep, profound perspective young people in this district. Yeah, very proud of that. The video will make you all smile. Thanks for noticing that. Just real quick, I don't know if you know this, but we have 62 college courses. You hear what I'm saying about a menu? I'm a Waterloo graduate, and I'm super-duper proud of that. But I had one AP class I could take, and I shouldn't have taken it, and I dropped out after a month. And I had one friend who took a Hawkeye class, and I had one friend who took a class at U&amp;I. We have 62, and 33.3% of our juniors and seniors taking one or more college classes. That is a huge point of pride. Looking at that equity data too. This is all of us. So, we have 62 college courses between AP and IB. This year, I'm going to move real quick to IB, because she's grown up to be a lady, don't you know? She will be five years old, and this is the year that we have the IB Authorization Review. I just want you to look at that real quick. We have five courses that are above the world average, and we haven't even gone through our authorization. We have 55% of our IB kids getting fours and hires. 94 transferable college credits, and an estimated about $34,000 in scholarships received by this cohort. If you look at the world mean, because we're on a seven-point scale, it's 4.7. West High mean is 4.56, East High 4.29. This year, we will have, I believe, 54 in the Full Diploma. But I'll get you the numbers, 57 in the Full Diploma. And I just had a parent meet with me last Friday, and her son's now going to enroll, so that's 58. So, that's the Full Diploma at two high schools. We have more numbers with the Singleton, so I'll get you those numbers. That's been slow to build, because kids still see it as all or nothing. Questions on the IB review? Okay, AP. We have some things, and this is my strategic plan, Lyle. Part of my strategic plan is, we had some, some change in AP staff. We definitely had to look at what, where were we going with understanding outcomes. We had some change. With that change, we realized some of the curriculum was not updated. So, I'm going to stick around, because you're looking at some AP Psych and AP Gov textbooks, as well as, there's a question about the concurrent policy that I wrote on textbooks. So, I'm, I'm with you all night, all night long, little Lionel Richie out there. So, AP, that was a tough year. I'm going to be honest with you, it was a little bit difficult. There was a brand-new staff, two brand-new staff, and two staff, it was just, it was a difficult year. So, we did drop. Percentages of threes or hires was 19.1. I'd like to see that much higher. We did have two of our AP scores go up, and they were above the state average. 12 AP courses district-wide with eight different subjects. And we had 215 AP exams last year, which this makes me really happy. 129 exams at West, 86 at East. Even Steven, based on numbers. Questions on that? Don't worry, we got it. We're working on it. Those will go up. The other thing that I wanted to tell you about, if you didn't know, is this is the full rollout year for twice exceptional. This is students who have an aptitude or a giftedness, and I don't have that for you, but I'll give that to you, in one or more areas. But they're also discrepant in another area. Could be dysgraphia, dyslexia, ADHD, could be a physical impairment, could be a mental impairment. But they are gifted in one or more areas. We are rolling that out district-wide. Wait for it. Drum roll. Michael, help me with the drum roll. We're the only district in the entire state of Iowa that offered 2E programming, and I just shared it at SAI on Thursday. And I've had four administrators and one superintendent already ask us about how we could roll it out in, in their district, how they could. That's a huge point of pride. So, again, be proud. I hope, I hope you know, I don't know if you always get to hear it, there is so much choice for all of our kids and so many opportunities in Waterloo. And the more we start getting that surge and saying, "That's Waterloo," yeah, it's changing. So, thank you. Appreciate your support.
Sharice, will you say again, there is a program for parents and families that's happening next week? Will you give the time and info on that for our viewers and the rest of the Board?
Oh, it's televised.
Yes.
Don't forget your readers.
All right, to the viewers. Tuesday night, August 21st, here in the boardroom, I'll have two, because last time it was standing room only. I sent out EdConnect calls. The EdConnect call will go out again next Sunday night. You'll receive all families, 8th through 11th grade. If you have a son or daughter in 8th through 11th grade and you're interested in taking college courses in high school, again, it's open access. We just want you to be prepared. We talk about college transfer credit options. What courses will better prepare you? 5 o'clock, and again, at 7 o'clock. And it's only one hour long.
And kiddos and their parents can both attend.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
I do go around to the middle schools talking about it. But again, kind of like right here today, you get like a little bit of a lot. So, then we set up additional meetings, if you want to go deeper into one of those different options. Next Tuesday, right here, 5 or 7, if you're interested in college opportunity.
Thanks, Sharice.
Thanks. Thank all of you. Hey!
And we'll, we'll, and we'll look forward to the video.
It's awesome.
Send it to us.
I will.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda then is information from individuals and delegations. And I'm wondering if anyone here this evening wishes to address the Board? And if so, please come forward. State your name and address. You'll have And if so, please come forward. State your name and address. You'll have three minutes. All right, so I'm not gonna, we'll keep on then. All righty then, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda this evening, and it's quite lengthy, so it has fourteen items on it. The minutes of the July sixteenth, two thousand eighteen regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, a student trip to Universal Studios in Orlando, Florida, the STEM Best Grant, business-engaging students and teachers, a donation from the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa, a textbook adoption for high school advanced placement American Government course, and a textbook adoption for high school advanced placement psychology course, the IJAG Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, the Communities in School of Mid-American Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, the Iowa Voluntary Preschool Contracts, the selection of Medicaid contracted services, the Urban Education Network two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen membership dues, and lastly, setting the date for a public hearing for the sale or disposal of real property. Can I get those items on the consent agenda on the table, please?
Some of.
Thank you, Jessie. And are there any items that members of the board wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item D.
Item D, as in dog? All right.
Item F and item G.
Item F and item G.
Item I, India, and O, Oscar.
Item I and item O. All right. Anything else? Then, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda, including items C, E, H, J, K, L, M, N, and P. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Those items carried. Did we second that?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, so now we're good. So then, the first item then is personnel appointments and adjustments. It's item D, it's on page twelve. And I will get to that recommended motion unless anybody else has it in front of them.
I move the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
Thanks, Lyle. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, you too. All right, and discussion. Go ahead, Lyle. Who, who pulled?
Well, I did, and you did.
Ask her.
So go ahead, ask her.
I was just wondering, I know last year about this time, and I don't know if you have the answer, I know you said you would. Where are we at? Are we?
Kingsley, yes.
Are all buildings full as far as teacher staffing? Where are we at with numbers? Are we, where are we at for appointments for the buildings?
Yeah, we're still working on it. Still working on it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We have about eleven total teacher openings right now, twenty-six total support staff vacancies, and one vacancy at the ESC level.
Sure, those regular classroom?
Six of them are general ed, and then the remainder of the five are special ed.
Are we adding to the special needs? I noticed that I think nine of the seventeen certified and thirteen of the sixteen uh, change assignments were special needs. Uh, a number of them, I think six and five, I think eleven of them were labeled student needs. So are we adding eleven positions? Is that, this is?
You know, I don't know the exact total net right now, Lyle. I, we, we do have some new, but it is not as many as what is showing right there. A variety of things happened. First of all, there were some positions last year that actually were not, were not filled, and so we had to, to, and that may happen this time too. If we don't fill a position, then we'll have to come up with a, you know, a plan because, because we still need to serve the students. The other thing is that sometimes if somebody leaves throughout the year, we may not refill that position. If a student might, might leave then, or if a staff member leaves, we may not refill that position. And so it might have been down one, one staff member last year, and then we're adding that person back. So it isn't really resulting in a full net of eleven teachers. I believe, when I looked at the numbers, I believe we are actually up four special needs teacher. I have it up on my board in my office, and I believe the number is four, and it might be four point five. When you actually look at comparison of the number of special needs teachers last year to the number of this year. So yes, there are slightly more, but it's pretty consistent.
Impairs are considered what percentage?
Um, what do you mean?
Because you said it doesn't in totality equal?
That was first, just for teachers that I was quoting, so. Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't quoting paras. I'm not exactly sure where the number of paras, I'm not even sure what that is.
It just seems like the student need comments, Lyle, are typically under the para position, so.
And that could be too.
I also have a question. You got one, Lyle? On the page fourteen, toward the bottom, the interim position for the administrator, is that, are we still actively looking for an administrator, or is that on a year basis?
That is a one-year, so we will post that again in the, you know, February, March, when, when there are more, more people available. Now is not the greatest time to be looking for administrators, so we're going to, we filled it through an interim, named an interim, and then we will repost in the spring.
So is the six, you say how many positions are open?
As far as which one, eleven?
Eleven.
Well, I don't think so.
Is that, seems like that's kinda high. Is that more than normal this time year, going into the?
I got this one too.
You probably don't have the background.
Yeah, I would say, just, yeah, there was, from my conversations with Dr. Smith, there were more last year. She's done a wonderful job, kind of helping and preparing for us having a lower number this year. We're still actively working on it. I can tell you, we have multiple orientations this week. We had an orientation today. So these numbers, you know, will change as we work through this process as well. I think the kind of follow-up question to that, or kind of follow-up response is, how are we going to, are we gonna get these all filled by the beginning of the school year? And that's our hope. I mean, that's what we're trying to work to, and that's what the team has been working to as well, and so. I would say, when I got here, about a week and a half ago, we weren't looking so good, and so I feel like from there, we've really kind of dived in. And again, across the administrative team, including our building principals, really worked hard to get these positions filled.
I think every year, we, we do have to start, we do have to start a couple classrooms with a, a long-term sub. There are teachers available for hire in December, as soon as you and I graduates, and, and other colleges, and other colleges. So we have had to start on occasion with, you know, two, three, maybe four long-term subs. That could be the case this year as well. The other thing, I mean, we have, we have other options that we do use. Once in a while, if we're looking for a special needs teacher, there are occasions where we have a, a good, we have a, we have a viable candidate who is not certified in special ed, and so we, they can get it, they can apply for a conditional license. That's a very common thing. That isn't, that is never our go-to, but we do, I mean, we, we work very hard to fill those positions. So there are a variety of options that we still have, but, you know, we're still, we still have people that are interviewing right now, so.
It seems like the sooner you recruit and hire, the better selection you have, so.
Without a doubt.
So is this a result of resignations we didn't foresee, or?
It is.
What?
We, we actually started earlier this year. I can speak, I know Kingsley wasn't here, but we started earlier this year than we ever have because we had contracts out earlier. Teachers, the, to, took at the teacher pool, they had their contracts in hand by April, and they were due back, I believe, on, what, May seventeenth or something? So that really gave us a, a much better look at where we were, and so we started instantly. So we have, I mean, this is, it, it, it always makes us nervous when we have August on the calendar and we have anything open, but it is significantly fewer open positions than we've, we've had in the past. So it really is, you're right, you are spot on. Starting earlier is the key.
And so I would tell you, Director Schmidt, sorry, nobody's names just yet, that, that, for us, I was just talking to Stephanie, some of these positions are no longer even open anymore. We're going through, this is just a list I generated this morning, but it's already been some changes. I just posted the Cunningham and Lincoln position because of resignations that occurred late Friday as well. And the industrial tech position came over late last week, and so it really speaks to what Dr. Lindemann was saying as far as these, we were feeling really good around Wednesday of last week, and then, and again, a ton of resignations came in, and we had to kind of address those by putting them on the posting.
And I wanna make it clear, if somebody resigns at this late time, we don't, we, we may post for the position, but we may not have them leave. We may not let them leave until we have a suitable replacement. So at this point in time, it's, it's not like we're accepting resignations readily, because it's really late to be, you know, if somebody says, you know, "My spouse is leaving, my spouse is moving somewhere," you know, or "They got a new job, could you at least look?" Of course we'll look, because we do try to work with all employees, but it's not a guarantee. I mean, we have to have staff members, so.
Do we look at our retiree pool?
You bet. Yeah, some retire, some retirees have the shortest retirement in history because they are back at it already this fall, so you bet.
And also, we had this conversation today, I mean, in general about the teacher shortage, and it's a, it's a, it's a conversation that I would say is happening across multiple districts, not only in Iowa, but also in some of the states that I've gotten calls from in the Midwest about, you know, "Well, hey, we're interested in this teacher." I mean, they have openings, and they're trying to pull from us. We're trying to pull from them, and so it's a really tough time from a, I mean, education standpoint as far as, you know, getting our teachers in. And so we're, we're working on some different methods and looking at some different things we can do to see what we can do on the back end later on this year.
Do we, do we lose many we would like to have because of the pay scale?
Not that, I mean, not very much, yeah.
Yeah, we do extra interviews. Not that I've been told, even in the initial resignations, I think there's some changes to family situations that have happened right at the last minute that has caused some issues, and so that's a part of that. And as you know, this is a transitional time in general for a lot of people. I mean, I came up here just now, in the last couple, last couple of weeks, and so I think we have to be cognizant of that, and I think that, again, having that opportunity in May to get that information out ahead of time, so our teachers were prepared, our administrators are even better prepared for potential openings that may came, come about, is something that I would, you know, love to look forward and make sure that we do it this upcoming year as well.
Okay, one last question from me. How does kindergarten, do, you know, registration, do we think we've got a high percentage? I mean, are we staffing? That's always kind of a, uh...
We have an algorithm that we use to estimate how many kindergarten students we're going to have. I mean, a lot of times, we'll carry forward the number of kindergartners from last year, but that isn't the best because class size always fluctuates. So we actually do have a triangulation of data that we look at. One of them, probably the, what I have found to be the clearest form, formula for ga, for estimating what it's going to be, is looking at the births five years ago in Black Hawk County, and then we get a certain percentage of those, and so on my computer, two years ago, I was off by four kids, and last year, I was off by thirteen. So we've got it down really, we can pretty much guess. I will let you know what, what we're off this year, but we really have it very, very, very close. But even thirteen is, that's a half of a class, so, and you always hope that they are evenly dispersed across the district, so it's, you know, one extra here and one extra here, so it doesn't require a last-minute hire, but we, we've got it down to, we're, we're pretty close.
Are you done, Lyle?
I am.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I just think that, that some of the things are variables that we can't control. So, I mean, life situations, we can't control, and I appreciate all your input tonight, Kingsley, but apologizing from all of us. Would you like to introduce yourself? Because lots of people don't know you, and we're excited to have you on board, and just tell us a little bit, because you're the new Dr. Smith, so we, we're excited.
Yeah, so I, I would like to say, you know, thank you to the board, as well as Dr. Smith, for all her guidance throughout this entire process. I mean, as you know, she's a wealth of information. I don't have the same ability for her to remember, you know, at nine o'clock PM, that teacher name, whatever the case may be, so I'm copiously taking notes right now to make sure I'm getting some of the questions that are here, so I can address them later on. I come to you by way of Iowa City. There, I was the Director of Equity and Staffing, have a long history in working in equity, a long history in working in human resources as well. I, I just had this conversation not too long ago with our association. The, the two components that I talk about in general about me is I'm a huge relationship person, so I'm definitely a culture guy, and I really wanna focus on how we can look at this, understand our numbers right now, and from a data standpoint, look at what we can project out and do from a culture standpoint, earlier in the year, next year, how can we excite some people about Waterloo? We just had Sharice give that wonderful presentation, and just talk about the amazing things that are happening here, and recruit to that level, but also look at the retention. I know that you just have recently had Cersei Stumbo and some others come before you and talk about retention and what that looks like. We had the same presentation at the time I was in Iowa City, and how you can incorporate that into the culture and look at, again, not just focusing on the recruitment, but the retention standpoint of it, and so that's what I'm about from that standpoint, and looking at relationships and how we can connect and do more. And the other part of it is empowerment. And so how do we, or how, how do we as a group, how we as administrative team empower administrators, empower our teachers to be amazing, to do more, to have that flexibility, to push and, and do different things with our students to ultimately increase the level of achievement and decrease the behavior that we're seeing in our classrooms. And so I'm excited. I tell this to people all the time that, you know, Waterloo, I did my research and I did my homework. I mean, I feel like it's a, it's an up-and-coming area. I'm loving the stuff that I'm hearing, not only from our folks within the ESC, but also at the community level as well. There's definitely a great stir and conversation about how we can all be complicit in this work and move the conversation forward, and I love that. So I'm excited to get in the work, get my hands dirty, and work as hard as possible.
Thank you. Just, and how do you like to be referred to?
Kingsley.
Kingsley.
Got it.
I see we got your name played up, so that's a good first step at least.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Awesome, awesome, and welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. Thank you. All right, is there anything further for Kingsley this evening? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to item F, which is the student trip to Universal Studios in Orlando, Florida. And that recommended motion is the Board of Education approve travel for approximately one hundred and seventy-five West High students and eighteen chaperones to Orlando, Florida, June first through the eighth of twenty nineteen.
Some of.
Thank you, Jessie. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Sue, and discussion.
I just wanted to pull this as far as, just to let known the great opportunity it is for our students. It will be held after school is out in June, so it's not gonna take any time away from educational instruction. And secondly, I just wanted either, I guess, Jane, to reiterate on the involvement of West High's band and East High and Joelle's decision and that type of thing.
Sure. We did talk with the band director for, from East, and they have in the past, they've done a combined trip before. They chose not to do that this year because I believe East is pursuing a different alternative, which may be before you at a different time. So they are still working out the specifics of exactly what, what they're going to do or where they're going to go, and they weren't prepared at this point in time to bring their proposal before you. But they, they actually did, I mean, they did talk, and they decided not to do a joint trip this year, but, but they have done that in the past, and I'm guessing they will do that in the future as well.
Thank you, because I know in previous years, they've traveled together.
They have, they have done that, and that they, they conscientiously, intentionally decided not to do a joint trip this year, but you will see a, an East High trip coming forward when they get the particulars worked out.
And I just wanna reiterate what Sue said about the timing of this. They've gone in the past over spring break, and it's been, it's a, that's a long haul down there on those buses at that time. And so to go right after school gets out does allow them a little bit more flexibility. It gives them a better schedule and a timeframe. And having kids who've gone on this trip, it's a lot to get done when they leave on a Sunday and come home on a Friday. It's just a lot. So I think it's gonna be, I think this is gonna be a really great option for those kiddos. Plus, it gives them even a little bit more time. It gives families a little more prep time to work on that, you know, the financing piece.
Parents that'll be tagging along.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we might, you never know.
Well, and we will have to pay attention to this too, because the last day of school, if you notice that our last day of school is May thirty-first, and this is leaving the very next day.
Right.
So we're going to pray for good weather throughout the school year, because if, you know, if we add, start adding days, it would be Monday and Tuesday, so we'll have to take, we'll, we'll keep an eye on that as we go, so.
Yep.
It is learning. It is, you know, so I think their, their idea of putting it at the end was so that they didn't have to pull them out of,
Yeah.
um, pull them out of class coursework, which is usually a, a desire for them not to do that.
You know, you have bus, weather concerns either, with spring break, you still got weather.
Yep, you do, you do.
Kids on buses and weather, you don't have it this time of year, so.
And it is super educational. I, I had kids that went on it, and they learned from some of the best musicians down there. It, it is real educational, as you said, Rhonda.
All right, well, anything further? All right, then all those in favor of approval of the student trip to Universal Studios in Orlando, Florida, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item G, which is on page thirty-three, and this is our STEM Best Grant.
I move the Board of Education approved application and acceptance of the grant from the Iowa Governor's STEM Advisory Council in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thanks, and a second? Thank you, Astor. And discussion. I know that Jeff Frost is here tonight. I know Todd's here tonight. We might have some questions, so.
The Masons are here.
The Masons are here, yeah. I, I don't want to call people out that are not comfortable talking, but just know that I'm sure somebody's got a question, so.
As I understand this, this is one of thirty-seven programs, models, whatever. We've chosen the graphic communications to apply for. How did this come to be? Do any of the other models line with our career center? And what will the twenty-five thousand dollars be spent on?
I think we will invite our team up to address that question.
Actually, sorry, I can't see everybody back there, so I'm sorry, I'm not.
Angela Myers, appointed STEM Coordinator for the district. So this was a grant that Angela brought to us a few weeks ago, and had kind of already envisioned a partnership with the Waterloo Career Center and McKenna Pro. And Todd and Mason have done a lot of work together already, so it was kind of a natural fit to utilize those two for this grant. And the purpose of the grant is really to just provide business exposure to the students. The teachers are actually going to kind of collaborate across three different areas, so we'll have graphic communications, marketing, and digital media.
Digital.
So they'll be going through the whole business model of going through marketing, what kind of products can we make, where's the need? Go through production, trying, trial and error, and then going through digital media and like doing promotional videos, getting it out there. So it's giving the students that real world business exposure. The twenty-five thousand dollars, we don't have itemized yet because we're still working on writing the grant. We just wanted to get board approval before we submit it. But that can be used for materials, it can be used to travel students to different STEM festivals. We can go to the state Capitol for their STEM Day and promote what we're doing to buy, to bring in professional development. It can be used for a large variety of things. We still have to sit down and kind of nail out where we see that money needing to be.
So from a McKenna Pro standpoint, what's, what's?
I really just wanted the high school kids to help us develop a new product so I could sell it. And not, you know, not have too much of my staff involved, no. Todd and I have been working together on some things. We are donating a big industrial printer to them. That facility is so amazing over there. In fact, we, we just want to move in, actually, to be truthful. So we, we got kind of excited about how we've got developing technologies and printing. So we're a professional photo lab, but we put images on everything from metal to, to real photographs, to graphic press printers, to canvas, to, and we're a nationwide company. All of the work comes into us via the internet. So we're, we're really diverse and always creating new products, and we had some excess equipment. And so we connected and talked about how, in a real world experience, so there's, there's actually, in our space, there's probably thirty companies that do what we do in the US. We're wholesale to professional photographers. Well, uniquely, in the Cedar Valley, there's two of us. American Color Imaging over in Cedar Falls and ourselves, so we, it's, it's kind of unique that we're this close. The industry leaders are in Minneapolis, Kansas City, and Columbia, Missouri, are three of the largest. So there's, there's jobs here, and so we were talking about, wow, think about if some students could come through. We worked together on some projects. If, if they came out of this program and knew, knew basic Photoshop, knew how to color correct images, knew how to print on various medias, knew, understood color management principles and output, I mean, all this technical stuff, right? But no one walks in my door and has that and says, I want a job, because I would hire them before they ever got very far through that door. And American Color, again, I mean, you'd just watch the papers and watch the ads they run every year. We all staff up for the fall season. They're larger than we are. So we thought, wow, this, this could be a way for, for the youth to have jobs, come into it with some skills that will easily transfer. So pretty exciting. And then we, we talked about this grant, and well, what could we do with it? We started talking about some real world problems we have and thought, well, what if they could help us? And we went a little further because one of our major niches is high school photography, and they're always looking for new products there. Thank you, Facebook, for what that's done to us, which has not helped feed any of my children at all. And that's been a big demise in our industry because there were, high school seniors spent a lot of money on photographs. And so why not take that group and say, hey, what, that product that we haven't thought about, would you think about? Would be cool, and then let's do it. We'll show you how to do industry research, and, and we need to know about price points. Can it sell? Is it viable? What about procurement of raw materials? You, you come up with it, and then let's figure out how to make it, and then come and teach my staff how to make that thing, we'll sell it, so.
How large is your staff?
We have thirty-five.
And there's opportunity to expand? I mean, the business would be there?
I sure hope so, yeah.
So you're looking at it from a recruiting standpoint. At the end of this curriculum that we offer, is there a gap? Where would they need to go to become?
A viable employee or candidate?
Yeah.
I'm, I only know so much about the curriculum, but I can tell you that if somebody came into any of these organizations that I mentioned and had a background in some of these basic skills that I've discussed, that we know you would, they actually would have at the Career Center, they would, it would be a shoe-in. I mean, there'd be no question that we would. Now, do they have the rest of it? Are they sharp? Do they look like they're going to show up on time? Can they communicate? Did they fill out the application appropriately? These conditions all being met, they would be a top-notch candidate.
And Jeff, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but let's take, for example, the graphic communications and the photography. If a student wishes, because that's equivalent to one year, correct? So if a student applies for a job where an employer wants some college or a degree, those classes are transferable to Hawkeye's because we have a media, we have photography program, so they can get their associate's degree. And then also, if they want to, because their parents want them to get a bachelor's degree, because they don't, you know, some parents, you know, want that, then you and I, they have a graphic communications program also, so the pathways that we have at the Career Center for almost all of the programs have a clear pathway to the associate's degree, and they would only have to do a year. So they can get a year under their be, their belt at the Career Ca, Career Center, is that what we're calling it? The Career Center, and then they could go do one year at the community college, and then go on and maybe do two years or more at the four-year college or university, depending on what they want to do. But most of the Volk Tech, the Career Tech programs, only require an associate's degree. But if they want to go into nursing, they could go on to Allen and get the bachelor's. Does that make sense?
But they could do this while they're working?
Yes.
Yeah, one of the unique aspects of this area is Hawkeye actually has one of the top-ranked photog, professional photography curriculums in the United States. More professional photographers come out of Hawkeye than almost any other area of the US. So it's kind of a sleeper event, if you will, but in my industry, we all know it. And the professional photographers of Iowa Association, the Guild, is the, is the best in the US. So it's a, it's an interesting hotbed of, for photographers, but there's never been much on the output side. So the other end of the cameras, we say, that's really happening in this area. And there's, there's plenty of jobs throughout the US, and this crossover between photography and graphic arts is a relatively new thing, because the, the technology has crossed over, so the disciplines have, have blended. So it's, it, it may, we may be using the word photography or graphic art, but it's, it's, it's broader than you may think.
And also, I think a positive with it, Lyle, is even I have a child that just got a BA, and on a lot of applications, it's saying they want two years professional experience. Well, how have you gotten that if you went to four years to college? If you didn't do something like this? So that is just perfect, because that gives you professional experience. So I think it's just a win-win, so thank you, Dave.
Yeah, you bet, Sue.
And one last question for Jeff. How did we pick this one out of all the programs?
For the application?
For the application.
Yeah.
Because they were the ones that asked for it.
Are there others that are seemingly fit in the future?
Absolutely. Actually, we have combined with Todd's Digital Graphics, our Digital Interactive Media, and our marketing program are coming together. So we actually have three programs that are synergizing together on this grant moving forward. Actually, we have our new marketing instructor is here, Jill Shares.
Oh, yay. Welcome.
She's going to be part of the mix. Matt Dunkerton, who's our Digital Interactive Media instructor, is not here tonight. But really, we have three of our nine programs working together on this. Honestly, we probably could have had five or six of the programs working together on just this grant, because it is so broad and really a visionary-type grant, and what we're doing out there really is creating a lot of synergy between different pathways, working together. And that's one of the great things about what we do out there. It's really that combination of programs working together, not working in a silo.
Thank you.
One thing about the grant is it's only for the time period of, I think they give the awards out at the end of October, and then the money has to be spent by the end of June, but you can reapply every year. And it's not necessarily tied to one specific, like, course. It can change, and it can be for multiples. It's just making sure that we're utilizing STEM and supporting businesses with the school district. So it can be fluid across years. We can apply again in future years if we see a different partnership that we want to utilize. So this was just the one this year that kind of made a lot of sense, and we had a big mission going forward with it.
And as far as the one-on-one match, it said it has to be during the funding period of the grant, so does that only go to October, or do we have to June for the one-on-one match?
It would be till June.
Till June.
Yes, and it can be in cash or it can be in kind.
In kind, perfect.
Okay. I actually talked to the regional STEM director today, and it could be covering like teacher salaries during that time. It could be donations from McKenna during that time, money we were already using to buy materials and supplies. So we just have to kind of sit down and break down where we see the money at and.
Perfect. Good job getting the grant.
Yeah, exciting.
Yeah, I'm.
Well, they don't have it yet. They're applying.
Right, right, they're applying, right.
I'm going to claim that, that we're going to get that. And I, you, you know, historically, women and minorities are underrepresented in a lot of the STEM fields. If, when we get this grant, is there a, a plan to recruit and retain those underrepresented populations in some of those programs? Are you, are you seeing some, you know?
I already see more minorities and females in my classes, even now, as it is, and particularly coming from the apparel industry. For twenty years, I was, I worked for some big corporations, and I worked under executives who were female and minority. So I don't think there's necessarily a plan in, per se, but we could prob, well, we could pull data on that, and we can show that. I just think that the, that opening these doors brings in a wide mixture of students, a wide, a wide audience. So I, I, I just said before, I don't think there's an actual, an actual plan in place.
Well, if the numbers, what if the numbers are there then?
Part of the grant asks for demographics, so what student populations will be impacted by this? So we'll have to get numbers from the courses.
Right.
And if we're doing the three different courses kind of cross, we'll get numbers from all of them on female, male, ethnicity, everything, on who's getting impacted. I would like to see us do a lot of PR at STEM festivals, going to the STEM Day at the Capitol and showcasing the things that we're doing in Waterloo to help draw people. And then I also see the middle school exploratories that are being implemented with Project Lead the Way, helping to support growing those populations and seeing more of them go on to the Career Center as we see those get more in place.
Well, I tend to ask questions I already know the answers to, so I, I, I knew that, you know, we were pretty good on getting some of the women and minorities into our, our programs. So the, the reason I brought that up is because when you're writing for this grant, because especially Governor Reynolds and, and a lot of these grants are looking for opportunities, because employers are saying, we need more women and minorities. So Waterloo is a great opportunity to let them know, hey, in addition to the fact that we're writing this grant, we have these demographics here better than any part of the state, and this is how we can meet some of the employer demands for women and minorities. So you might want to use that as a highlight that you can provide to, to the grant, because we can, we have the numbers. I just want to share that with you. So put that in there, because that'll help.
One thing I will say is, when we were first sitting at the roundtable discussing this, one of the reasons that we feel very strongly that we have a great chance of getting this was because of the ethnicity and the makeup of our community. And we feel very strongly that we will probably get this grant, and part, a large reason part of that is because of the makeup of our community. And that's, we're very proud of that. On a sidebar of that, just not specifically towards this grant, but towards the Perkins Grant, every year I have to renew the Perkins Grant and rewrite the Perkins Grant, which brings in, for this coming year, it's going to be about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. One of the focus areas on this year's Perkins Grant for us as a district was recruitment of minorities, both, just in general, minorities across the board into CTE career fields. So that is a large area of focus on, on our monies. We have to kind of categorize our hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and where we think we're going to spend it. And not a majority of it, but there's a large portion of it that is focused on specifically recruitment of minorities into our CTE programs. So.
So are we at, in terms of percent of capacity, number of students as percent of what we could have, that we could serve, where about are we at?
We, we're still working on registration right now. We actually have people that are actively still looking at schedules and, and registering students. And we actually have parents and people from other schools still calling us and asking for tours of the facility, registering now. So I don't have a, a solid number. It's very fluid right now. I can tell you what I would tell, would say today would be different than August twenty-third. It's going to be, it's going to be higher on August twenty-third for sure. But right now, with that said, we're feeling very strongly about where we're at going into first semester of this school year.
So that class is not full, to reiterate that. It's not.
No, we could still take more on those, and I will tell you that, you know, our first year, we were down in the, you know, thirties, forties, fifties, kids traveling to the center. Last year, we were in the mid one hun, one hundred, one hundred forty. This year, I know we're going to be over three hundred, and, and we'll see where that goes. We actually track for each program, we have a capacity, so, you know, to take Todd's program, we can serve, there's three blocks, block one, block two, block three. He can take, you know, give or take, we, we figure twenty kids at a time, so twenty, 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 so he could have sixty in the fall, sixty in the spring. You know, some classes are slightly lower, some classes, you know, might be twenty-two, twenty-four, some might be eighteen, depending on OSHA requirements and that kind of thing. But we, for all intents and purposes, plan sixty for the fall, sixty in the spring per program. And so, for example, nursing is full with a handful of kids on a waiting list, and they will get in the, you know, we'll keep getting them in. will get in, you know, we'll keep getting them in. Todd's program is filling up. Some of the newer programs, when we know out of the gate, the very first year, a lot of times, they are not as full, but as kids come back and try it, and we get kids over there to see the programs, it is definitely growing. And so I would, this is actually part of my, it was going to be part of my superintendent's report at the end, but I'll just say it now, that I am super proud of the work that's going on. Jeff Frost has been amazing, and he has, you know, I would throw kudos out to somebody named Jane Kemp Olferz, who has just knocked herself out all summer, you know, working with kids, calling families, "I heard you wanted this, you know, what can we do to switch?" We had a person who, with a late resignation, trying to switch kids around and doing all of those kind of things. So, I mean, I couldn't be more pleased with the numbers that are coming. You know, when you're talking about going from 37 the first semester to 350 right now, I mean, that's pretty good growth, and we've got four semesters under our belt. This is our fifth semester, so that's a point of pride, too, to use Shree Sortman's words. I don't know if she's still sitting back there, so.
I'm not as cheerful as Shree. I can't bring it like she can, yeah.
Jeff, just a question for Jeff, maybe Todd. I know I've been over and seen at one time where we're doing shirt screen printing, and I think, I actually saw that one at the original Expo. But has, you talk about the digital media stuff, has the capability improved? So I look at, probably one of the things we use across this district for fundraising is how many of the sports and clubs use the high gloss posters? Is that, is that something we have been able to bring capability in-house yet?
That's exactly where, like, someone like Dave with McKenna, like, he can show me what machinery to get, who to buy the paper from, who to get the inks from, and how to use it just right, you see. So let's say that part of, like, this grant even, well, maybe we need to get a special small little printer thing to devise a new thing that then he is going to take to market and sell. But myself, my students will learn how to use this smaller thing that we can then use for other products, to match that quality of an actual big glossy print. I can, I can take the photos, I can graphic, and I can do the Photoshop, but actually to make it, to print it, to make it look just perfect, I got to go to a guy like McKenna. And that's where this partnership, and again, we started in February. We've been, he's donating this machinery and going to show us how to use it, which is absolutely huge. But then with this grant, like, well, part of what, I already said this, is that part of, like, with this grant is that we might need a different machine. Who knows? And, but part of it is the trial and error process.
Right.
So are we there yet? No, we're not there yet. But we have, you know, moving my classroom, because what you saw over at the Christian is now on 10 pallets, and it's completely torn apart. It's, yeah, we start school in a week, and my classroom is still in the gymnasium at Central on 10 pallets. But anyway, once the room is set up, once we get it going, once we get rolling, once we get the new machinery in, and the training on how to use it, I'm hoping down the road we'll be able to satisfy.
I always thought that, you know, we spent a lot of money on printing those, if you could bring some of this stuff in-house, I mean, it all net savings, where there's savings that people are fundraising for, that, you know, that you can redirect those funds elsewhere to help support and...
I'm sorry to interrupt. There's sponsors on there, so that would bring in the marketing and the...
Right, exactly, yeah.
...business aspect, you know, with our new instructor. So again, it's part of our partnerships that we're developing at the Career Center. I just had a meeting last week with all the ADs from the, you know, just, so we're starting those sorts of conversations, and I'm hoping from the production end, you know, once we get things rolling, I'm not going to say, yes, we'll possibly be able to, I'm going to work my darndest to make it work, though.
Yeah. Well, I know some of the stuff even that, you know, sometimes we've been able to print smaller, but then you print somebody small and somebody big, you outsource maybe to big, but it sounds like you wouldn't even have connections to maybe do that even, too, you know?
Or if we do outsource it big, we'll be more knowledgeable as to have everything set up just right, and be able to talk to the big shop in a more educated manner than as myself, with just to make a big graphic and send it out to somebody and hope it's going to look okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, part of what we're hoping to do as well is help with some industry best practices. And so, as Todd was saying, if they want, you know, truly, right now, you can do large with the printer I'm donating to you. So it's going to almost be the other way, it'll be volume-dependent. And so if you have high volume, it may be more cost-effective to off...
Right.
But I've got all the connections with Todd, I can help him source that more economically. But most importantly is that the files are coming out correctly, that you just go right into another workflow, and you can save money there as well, because you're not having to mess with them. So we're trying, we're hoping, we've got some ideas, but...
Sounds like some good synergies probably coming here.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. We look forward... And I think the key to our recruitment out there is just the students. I mean, they're just key to the recruitment.
Yep, they sure are, so. All right. Well, all those in favor, then, of approving the STEM Best Grant for the Business Engaging Students and Teachers, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. It takes us to item aye, which is the textbook adoption, and that recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the adoption of American Government Roots and Reform 13th Edition in the amount of $5,830.70.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Rhonda, thank you. And discussion?
Uh...
Ms. Sortman is still here for that, I think.
I pulled it just because I'm going to abstain on this one. I haven't had a chance to review, particularly the American Government Roots and Reform. This is one of those areas that is subject to a lot of political bias, and I just don't want to vote for something that I haven't reviewed, and I'm sorry, haven't had a chance to review it yet, so.
Okay. Shree, so I'm guessing you can get Lyle a copy of the...
I will. I'll send you, I'll send the summary of the content of that course.
Great.
It has, just so you know, it's been updated. That's why we're, and we've been using it outdated, so it's not aligned to the, that course outcomes. And it's a lot more historical skills, and critical thinking has been added to that.
Great.
You can hear about that.
Okay.
So I think you would probably look at it, and, like, I get the whole indoctrination piece, but it's really heavy on historical thinking skills, and being able to analyze and counterclaims and defending, and much more of an inquiry base than the original textbooks were. And that's how that AP course actually is evolving, I'll be honest, to be a little bit more like IB. So it's the critical thinking skills rather than just memorization of historical content. But I'll give you the summary.
That'd be great.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you. All right, so the recommended motion, then, all those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, do we have any more questions on that? I didn't mean to. All right. Then all those in favor of approving item aye, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. With one abstention, and chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Yep, motion carried. You got that, Sue? Thank you very much. All right. The next item on our agenda, then, is item o, which is on page 88, and this is the Urban Education Network. I'm not sure.
Page 77.
Medicaid.
Oh, pardon me, I have the old agenda, I'm sorry. Yep, the selection of the Medicaid contracted services, excuse me, on page 77.
The Board of Education accept their recommendation and approve the renewal of the contract from Timberline Building Services as claims, of claims, as presented from July 1st, 2018 to July 30th, 2021.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And discussion?
Yeah, I'm just looking for a little more explanation of what this...
Well, the simple explanation is when the board exhibit was put together, it was not reflecting the recommendation of the contract. The contract itself, if you look at the board agenda from last month, was for three years.
Right.
And the superintendent's recommendation, the motion that you passed, was for one year. So it was just an oversight on how it was printed on the cover of the exhibit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for that clarification. All right, is there anything else done with that? All right, then, all those in favor of the item selection of Medicaid Contracted Services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our consent agenda for this evening, so we will move on, then, to the board policy changes, and this is the second reading for these. And that recommended motion is that the board approve the following policies: student motor vehicle use, transportation of students participating in extracurricular events, and concurrent enrollment textbook policy. Can I get that motion on? Thank you, Sue. And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. And I think Tara Thomas is here, if anybody has any questions on these three. Again, we saw these in July, so.
Sorry, I'm delayed in getting up here. I was getting my Facebook photo ready from the back that I, so sorry, I'm delayed in getting up here.
It's all right, no problem.
So these are the three policies that have come before you, that essentially were updating some of the practice with the, I guess, you know, updating the words to reflect current practice. Tell me the page again that these were on.
91.
Okay. Grab the... So we, essentially, after the committee had suggested that we talk with the athletic directors and some of the folks that deal with these extracurricular activities, then we updated the proposed changes to 513, which would be transportation of students taking part in extracurricular events, and the reflections, then, are all the changes that you see.
Does anybody have any questions for Tara? All right. Well, then, seeing none, are all those in favor of approving the board changes to policies 507.1, 513.0, and 603.72, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our action items for tonight, and so we will move on, then, to our financial information, which is on page 95, and I will turn this over to Michael Cofflin. We have exhibits here at our table.
I reproduced the exhibit in the back of the book because I wanted to just give you some highlighted numbers to look at, rather than trying to explain where I was at. Sometimes it's a lot easier to say, "Look at the blue number."
So it's the same, it's the same exhibit, it's just with the highlights.
It's the same exhibit, I just marked it up for a little clarity.
Color coding for people like...
Clarity.
Yeah. It's helpful.
Of trying to explain it. So I wanted to let you know as well that we just went through the first week of the preliminary audit. The team from Bergen was here. They were here Monday through Thursday of last week, and they had requested 96 items of things to prepare for them, and one of the reports that they wanted was 3,000 pages long. So you can see that a lot of information passed before their scrutiny and with first year of the audit, and coming to get to know us a little bit and our practices, and how we've been doing things. There was lots and lots and lots of questions, but it went very well. The office was very prepared. Those long reports were all sent electronically, so everything was transferred that way. We had a team of four auditors here, and they will be back the week after September 15th, when we have to have all of our reports to the state at that time. And then they will do the, complete the fieldwork, and then they are projecting to have the audit ready to present to the Finance Committee in November, and to be brought to the board in December for final approval. So we went through all of those things and what we had been doing, and it's going to look a little different, but it'll have the same information, and I think it will be a good transition for us. What I wanted to do tonight was just to give you an idea of how 1718 ended, because we certainly have additional work to do in the office as far as finalizing receivables and grants, and timing, and all of those things. So I'm opening this presentation with a disclaimer that these are approximate, but I wanted to give you an idea of where I'm expecting to land in the different main parts. And I'm going to go to the, actually, what I want you to look at first is page 5, the graphs that you normally see of cash flow. And you can see the general fund, the management fund, sales tax fund, and the PEPAL fund as our four major funds, and where those balances ended up compared to the last two years. So the actual cash in the bank has improved in all four of those, and every one of them has different reasons, and I'm not going to go into all of that now, but I just want to give you some, some approximate balances we're going to end the year at. And the Finance Committee will go through those details, and then it will come to the board. I know I talked about doing a state of the district, and we'll do that sometime in September. On page 1, if you look on the sheet, it's the revenues and expenditures. So for the major part of this is the general fund, and I've got that colored. The heading for the fiscal '18 projected, $131 million in revenues, and probably the most significant one was the federal revenue going up, and that was partly Medicaid. We did see a pretty good uptick in that, about $600,000 from the year before. And then we've got additional grants, like the K3 at-risk program was about $400,000. So we have things like that that come in that we can see a significant change when you look back to the year before. So we were a little over what our anticipated was, but that's a good thing in revenue. Expenditures right below it. We went from $122 million up to $128 million in fiscal year '18. One, it's kind of spread across all of the categories, salaries, benefits, and so on. I did highlight property because that's where Matt's computer budget is now part of the general fund rather than part of PEPAL fund, which it has been for a few years. So that's part of the increase up to $128 million, but we'll talk about that more. But the formula of that, for the fund balance, the actual cash value of the district, not the authority, is a little over $22 million, up from $19 million last year. And then also, to the right of that is the management and the sales tax fund. The management went up a little bit, to 1.9 from 1.7. The sales tax, that's the penny sales tax, and the revenue went up. This doesn't have prior-year exhibits, but I will have that in, as we look at the health of the state of the district in all of these funds. But I've got highlighted there in yellow the $16 million that was the sales tax revenue bond to build the WCC, the Career Center. So that's why that revenue is normally around 10 to 11 million in sales tax revenue. So it was up because of that borrow. And then the sales tax, year-to-date expended, was about $16 million, and that was primarily because of the WCC project, and how fast that was going.
When you say it's up because of the borrow, you mean we borrowed money we haven't spent yet?
Correct.
And that's the interest in interim?
We have, if you look back at that graph page, on page 5, under the sales tax fund, and you look in the numbers column, we've got 6.7 balance, 6.7 million, plus 11.5 of that borrow that we hadn't spent by June 30th. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but we're spending it. Yes, but we're spending it.
We are spending it. It will be on schedule with the pay apps that come in, and I had sent you the last pay app just to give you, uh, did that go out to the board members? I didn't even ask that. Okay, so we'll talk about that at finance, so.
Have we paid the final salaries? You have?
It's out of, the summer salaries are all out of these numbers. They don't go out, well, two days. So, the last ones will go out on August fifteenth. So, on page two is the other funds that deal with the revenue and expenditures. Um, PEPAL fund, um, went up a little bit, but that is money reserved for primarily the athletic field, so that, uh, a lot of that has not been paid yet, so, um, that will affect that balance. Uh, the debt service fund is really just money from the penny revenue that gets transferred into that fund to pay our debt. And the reason that number is high, there's still a balance of fourteen million in there, is because of the QSCB bond that we hold in a sinking fund until it's entirely due, the whole amount. So, that will continue to grow for a few more years yet before we pay that off. We do. Um, the nutrition fund, that's one of those that is really, uh, things close at the end of the year, but it really is very close to just breaking even. That's basically how our nutrition fund is set up. The internal service fund is the print shop, and that's got about twenty-seven thousand in, and the trust fund is some small scholarships that actually we paid out this year, and we haven't been given the money from the contributor, donors yet, so that's a little bit behind, but it's a receivable, so, uh, everything is as we have hoped, um, and certainly gives us the opportunity, as I'm sitting here listening to, well, what money, kinda money do we need to invest in preschool, in WCC, in staff, in whatever, and so that gives us a foundation, uh, to start from to be able to do those things. Uh, on page three is some different measurements, um, and I'm not gonna go into all of the, the details on this, I just wanna give you a couple of numbers. Um, I was saying the fund balance was a little over twenty-two million, uh, on page three up in the, up toward the top right corner, the third number down, twenty-one three oh eight is the, um, unspent balance number that we'll be close to, which is up from nineteen-four, so that's gone up a little bit. The next one was just an annual of how much money we had to spend authority-wise and how much we spent. So, really, we had about a hundred and thirty million of current year authority, and we spent one twenty-eight, so we spent ninety-eight percent of that. But for that balance to start coming down, we need to spend over a hundred percent. But it's amazing of once you get on a downward slide, it goes fast, so we have to do it very carefully. Um, the solvency on the bottom, uh, block of numbers, um, this is our cash balance compared to our revenues, and, um, we were at eight point six, two years ago, fourteen point six last year, and we're at seventeen point oh this year, so, that's remaining strong, but helps us in the future plans. On page four is the four categories for our certified budget, and we did that just a couple of months ago, of we amended our budget because we didn't wanna spend over what we had certified the previous April. So, in April, we certify a number, goes into the paper, but it's in four different categories, and we have to be within those numbers in all four categories, and if you look, um, in the second to the right column, in the yellow, in the seventeen budget, even though we had amended, we still overspent the student, the support services group because the state changed where we had to code TLC. So, this year, we were, um, a little conservative of upping that certified number because it doesn't mean we spend anymore, it doesn't raise any more taxes, doesn't create any more revenue, it just gives us ability to spend money that we already have, um, because we have a balance of twenty-two million in the general fund. Um, so this just keeps us within that certified budget number. Um, and I've got PEPAL and WCC down on the total of other, um, that one was eleven million over estimated because we really didn't know how far WCC would be. We could guess at that, but that's why that number's a little high. And actually, PEPAL, uh, the field, um, could have been spent a little faster than it was based on the company's practices and so on. So, I just wanted to give you some approximate numbers of where we're ending, um, similar to last year with a little bit of increase, um, in all of the areas, so we will dig into the details of that a little further in finance, and then into, uh, reports to the full board.
So, we revised it to protect from the unknown. Had we not revised it, would we have met all the numbers?
If we had not revised it, we would have certainly been over in the WCC project, because at the time that we, uh, approved the budget a year ago in April, we really didn't know what the final numbers of that was.
Okay.
And it was purposeful not to overstate it then, because we knew we'd have much more reliable numbers later, once the bid, because the bids hadn't even come in yet. So, we can always adjust to that, um.
And Michael, what will the nutrition fund look like now with, you know, more free breakfasts and free lunch?
We have, um, we're looking at that, we don't have final, um, a final answer on that of how that all worked.
Yes, from a salary perspective, I know that we have, uh, state restrictions, uh, with some of the new union requirements, and I know that from a business perspective, when the economy gets a little bit better, we, we hope that, um, that corporations will be good stores with the, with the excesses, but they tend to give bonuses to their stakeholders and not, their stockholders and not their stakeholders. So, my question is, at what point will the district get to where we could give our maybe teaching and non-teaching staff raises? Is that, is that possible, or is that a, a long drawn out thing?
We've already done that in the last three months.
Right, right, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, as our economy pr- improves, you know, next year, with, is it based on the three years? Right, I'm, I'm not talking about just the regular cap, the, the ones that, that we've agreed upon, I'm, I'm talking about in excess of that. Is that a possibility that at some point, if we are above and beyond where we thought we would be, is that maybe a one-time something we could, we could do? Not, okay, alright, thank you.
I appreciate the color coding, Michael, and it makes me real happy to see those trend lines above where they've been, that's great news, so. So, does anybody else have anything further for Mr. Coughlin?
Oh, I just wanted to, so overall, you think that the new auditing process is going to be, you know, we were a little bit.
We survived.
Yeah.
And they'll be back.
But sending five auditors, I mean, that's five new eyes on our books, which is a good thing.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
So, do you thi- what, do you anticipate being able to keep up with their demands for information?
Yep.
They give us, like, right now, they left and we've got a month before they'll be back, and, uh, that was one of our questions, uh, when they were finishing on Thursday, of is there going to be a lot more? Real, a lot of what they do is say, "We asked for this report before, now we need the last month," or whatever you've done since we were here last time, so, it's not a lot of additional, it's just amending what we have done before, but a lot of the major lifting has been done.
Great. Alright, thank you, really appreciate it, Michael. We'll look forward to September when we get into the real meat and potatoes, so, um, I will turn it over then to Dr. Lindeman for her superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a few things, I've already commented, a couple things that were on my list, but first, another welcome to, um, we have kind of new faces, and, and some have said changing of the guard, you know, when somebody's been here for a very long time, and so just, uh, um, yeah, it's very good to have Dr. Mohorn, Dr. Bachway, and Michael, welcome back to you as well. The oldies but goodies, some of us haven't changed, but some have, some faces have, so, welcome, I know that they actually started in July, but this is really kind of the, you know, once we get to August, you start thinking about the new year ahead, so that is, um, we're excited to have you, um, up here. Just a special invite to everyone for the east-west game on August twenty-fourth. I don't typically, um, make a big announcement, but, um, I really think this time it warrants that we, we've, you know, people have seen in the, in the paper and in the press that we have added, you know, tried to make some new changes at the Memorial Stadium, which was built by, you know, taxpayers, I think at one time donations, through donations, but, um, we've, you know, added the scoreboard last year, and there's turf this year, and it's really looking amazing, and so, with the opening game, it's very unusual that we would have the opening game be east versus west, west versus east, so I love that, we're gonna have just a huge group of community members out at the game, and so we just welcome everybody, and we hope we have an amazing turnout. I guarantee there will be no snow, so no worry about that, just come and enjoy, we'll hope that there's no rain, knock on wood on that. And then my very last thing is just about registration. Um, we have just undergone two days of registration at Central Op-, or, I'm sorry, at the Center for the Performing Arts, and, um, just had a great turnout. I actually went both days and kinda stood up front and talked with some families and asked them what they liked about, you know, the, the centralized location, and, you know, it just allows people to register, especially if you have kids in multiple buildings, it allows you to do a one-stop shop, so, um, you know, I heard really great things, and I think they, yeah, and more, yep, yep, you know, I think it was really, really great, and so, you know, right now, we are rolling up our sleeves and really looking at the registration, finding out where the, the hotspots are, and we define a hotspot as, you know, numbers where the, maybe the enrollment is, is, you know, significantly low, then we have to figure out what's going on, and then maybe if the, the class size is too big, and so we're just trying to look at that right now, um, those numbers will be coming in, looking at the number of kindergartners, all of those things, so, I, I think the biggest plea that I could make for anybody, I think I do this every year, the first meeting in August, is get your kids registered, please, we want them, we wanna know, um, you know, who's there and who's coming, and, and, you know, if you haven't had a chance to do that, even if you call, if you can't get to the school right now, even if you call and let us know, um, at least that, that just really helps us, because we, we don't wanna make plans to move staff somewhere where, where, you know, move them because we think that we're not gonna have kids, and then we do, or, or hire more staff, or, you know, move people around, it just is a really good thing, so, register your kids, lea- please let us know how we can help you if you have any questions about it, just give us a call, and, and we'll be happy to walk you through that, so, I think that's all for today.
And the first day of school is next Thursday.
Thursday.
So, you need to be in school next Thursday, so. Alright, um, I'll now take information from our board members, and I'll start with Lyle.
That was, that was gonna be my point, that if your student isn't in school August twenty-third, they're gonna be behind already.
That's right.
On August twenty-fourth, so, we, we struggle a little bit with that each year, so it really, really helps, not only your students, but the students that are there. To have them, have the students there from the beginning, so, that was, yeah.
Okay.
Hope for a good year.
Thank you. Aster?
Uh, thank you, Shanley. As a longtime resident of Waterloo, um, I'd like to say that I was very happy and proud, uh, this weekend, um, at the annual KBVG parade, um, which they start doing again, I think last year was the first year, but I seen so many, um, participants that were a part of the Waterloo Community Schools, um, whether it be the schools themselves, or I believe the ESC had a float, if I'm not mistaken, seen you guys on pictures, so I wasn't able to attend, um, I did work, but I did, um, enjoy some of the festivities afterwards, um, I didn't get a chance to walk in the parade, but I did, I see all the pictures, um, and did talk to a lot of the community members, and it was just an awesome weekend with so much representation from, probably, I seen probably twelve or thirteen schools, I believe. Every school?
Every school.
Okay, well, every school, every school then, I know I seen quite a few, so, I was happy and proud, um, that, um, you know, with everything that's been going on and, on that side in our community, um, that some positive, um, so, I do wanna say that, and on next weekend, the eighteenth, I believe, um, the tenth annual Take Back Our Community event, uh, will be held at Sullivan Park from eleven to four, uh, which they'll have free school supplies, uh, free food and prize giveaways, so, um, make sure you mark your calendars for that also, thank you.
And bring your families, because I've gone to that, I, my boys love that, they had, there's usually a bouncy house, there's some amazing events, so that is a great, great event.
Awesome, thank you. Rhonda?
Nothing, he already took the take.
Of course he did, I know, that's what.
Who's the point of contact for that, they want more information?
I believe Michael Robinson, with our friends of Hiller Family, I believe.
Okay. Sue?
Nothing tonight.
Jesse?
Well, I just say it's, you know, it's kinda fun to be August, you know, I, you know, as a parent, different things, so you, you go out, you hear bands practicing, you see a lot more activities at the schools, you know, the, everything getting kinda, you know, landscaping, everything getting kinda nice, everything kinda, you know, all the last of getting mowed, and, and, uh, you see the, hear football players out there, you're seeing, you know, see stuff on social media, see everybody's out, the, you know, you see the cross-country runners running for neighborhoods and stuff, and so, you know, it's just a lot of energy out there, and, you know, you think about all the things that are coming up, and just, you know, it's like, it's a really great time of year to see everybody back in the swing, kinda, you know, everybody sees summer go, but, you know, this is really, for my family is always a big time, gets the, kinda, year started for us, and, um, I imagine some parents glad to have their kids back in school to use their days a little bit, so, anyway, just, you know, like, echoing, get everybody in there, let's have a great start, and, um, and just kick off the school year.
I did have one thing, I'm sorry. The road will be open at Baltimore and Easton for West High, so, anywhere, I live right by there, and it's a pain, but, um, it will be open for the start of school, Easton and Baltimore, it's closed right now.
For Monday morning.
For Monday morning.
Monday morning, the all-star meeting.
Well, I don't know about Monday the twentieth, I know, I talked to the dude today.
Thursday the twenty-third.
I have one more also, the volleyball game.
Oh, yeah, on Thursday night.
Thursday on the, the twenty-third, the first day of school.
At West High.
Thursday and Friday be here.
Yeah.
Yeah, cross-country, that's your first, cross-country and swim both had their first meets on Thursday as well, so.
And golf has already had a meet?
Yeah, so first day of school, and we're gonna get kids out going somewhere.
And who's the home football team, just for our viewers?
East is the home, and then, east is home, west is the away.
Got it. So, the east band?
The east band will be on the, I don't know if they'll be on the field yet, but they'll be playing, I'm sure, so, awesome. Alright, anything further? Our next meeting, uh, of the board will be on August twenty-seventh, right back here in this room at five PM, so, seeing nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second, awesome, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, good evening, thanks. I have to hit the thing.
At seven-ten.
So, to your question, when I said Sunday, I mean, Sunday Irish.
I used to ask questions.
Not, not, not yesterday.
Got it, got it, yes.
So, the day before came out and he told me face to face.